Right, it is now one thirty-two. So, Dr. Frank, here's how we're gonna, we're gonna start off and we're just gonna do, there's twenty-two questions total. You'll have an hour and fifteen minutes. And we're gonna just go around the table with board members. They'll each, we'll each ask five questions. I think Dr. Schenk has one extra one. And then, but I just wanted to give you a heads up real quick. Mr. Brown has an unforeseen, he has a step away at two o'clock for a moment. So, he's gonna go first with his questions.
Okay.
But because we're live streaming, he can catch up anything then, so. But I just didn't want you to feel awkward and weird if he's-
That the interview was so bad that he left.
So, I just wanted, like I said, give you a heads up. The questions have been put together by, from community feedback. Community has sent in questions that we'll be asking and some of the questions will be from the board as well. So, it's just a mix of community and board questions, similar to yesterday as well. So, with that, we're gonna let Mr. Brown kick us off.
Okay.
All right, well, thanks for joining us. The first category is gonna be vision and priorities. So, question number one is what should be the top priorities for Lewis Palmer School District in the coming year? And how do you envision those evolving over the next five years?
Well, through the next year, into the next year, I think the priorities will be twofold. I think the, the second priority will be to continue the operations and the tasks that we have before us. You know, those include the, the recent decision with homeschool academy. It includes facility decisions. It includes continual finances. I mean, we're, we're getting to the, near the end of the budget cycle. And those, the CIC, the Innovation Center, that, you know, those are definitely at the board level, but the operations, you know, don't stop for, for a district, for the schools. I think, though, the first priority is the establishment of credibility and trust of the new superintendent. And that is, I think, obvious, but I think it's as important now as ever to, to, really to turn a page. You know, if it's me, I think, offering a fresh face to move forward. And we'll have to navigate some difficult history, both in the recent and, and of course, historical. That's always the case in a community. But it's really to turn a page and get kind of a new start where we can build that start on the momentum of our long history. So, trust building with the community and the staff is absolutely paramount right out of the gate. I think with that priority is also, it's kind of related to a transition plan. I think it's the superintendent working very closely, very early on, specifically with, with two entities in an operational sense, and that's the school board. And that's big red, but in particular, the cabinet, the executive team. And, and again, that's immediate. So, I think those are the, the priorities in year one. Year five's really hard to say. One thing I'm a big believer in, and you're starting to see this also in the corporate world, is though there's a place for strategic planning, there's definitely a shift that has taken place in having a more dynamic, organic, evolutionary-type approach to planning. And so, strategic plan is embedded within that, but it's really hard to say in five years what point B will be. That will depend on circumstances. That will depend on, we've got two board election, two seats up in November. It depends on the progress we make with trust, the progress we make with some of the tasks that I already mentioned. I can say generally in five years, I hope we're in a place where we are back to where we've been before in our history in D38, which is having energetic leadership that has trust and is building momentum, leveraging the size of our district to do innovative things. And I think some metrics will be, of course, student enrollment. I think staff and leadership retention. And I think the longevity of a superintendent. My hope would be certainly if I'm selected, I hope in five years, one reality is that I'm still sitting in the seat, because I think the longevity of a, of a good superintendent is something we, we really need.
Okay, thank you. Number two is what draws you to this opportunity and what excites you most about leading Lewis Palmer School District?
That's a good question. Simple but good. I love leadership and I love this industry, education. That's been the case for twenty years. And I, I see it continuing honestly for the rest of my working career. The role of superintendent is something that I've always had people, you know, I've been in four different districts, five different buildings. I've worked under a lot of superintendents, a lot of great leaders. And interestingly enough, for a very long time, I've heard it said, oh, you'll be a superintendent one day, or I could see you being a superintendent one day. Well, I mean, many years before I was even remotely ready. But as the years have progressed, I've become more interested in the role. One thing I've learned as a head principal of a, of a high school is I enjoy broad leadership. I can do the weedy work if I must, but I, the way I'm wired is I'm just wired to see the big picture. I'm wired to empower a team. I enjoy the burden. My wife knows this best. I'm happiest when I'm challenged. That actually makes me a healthy me. And I'll talk about this more hopefully today, but I think there's a lot of parallels between a head high school principal and a superintendent, because both roles are two roles that are not siloed. So, it's not like you're just manager of, of the sales department or, or this department, like even in corporate America. You, you have to pay attention to the whole operation. And I, I enjoy that work. And so, the role of superintendent actually excites me. Why here? Because this is the perfect place to be. We live here. We are not moving. We moved our family across the nation four years ago and I am not moving again. We love Monument. This is our only home in Colorado. And so, this is really the dream opportunity, to be honest. Yes, to leave Palmer Ridge, but to do it to take on a bigger responsibility to lead this district, D38, and hopefully, hopefully for a very long time, which I can say with confidence, because it's where I live and it's where I wanna be. And, and I think even Palmer Ridge staff find a comfort in that. I, I hope they don't all want me to leave. But I think that there's a, a growing need of having the right leader in, in the district office. And we've just got such great people and, and parents and students here in this district.
All right. Next section here is gonna be under leadership and decision-making. So, question number three is can you share an example of a difficult or uncomfortable decision you've made as a leader? How did you approach it? And what, if anything, would you do differently?
I think decision-making is a strength of mine. I, I think I benefit from being highly analytical, but that's actually secondary to that big-picture kind of thinking. So, it's just the way that I'm wired, that I can kind of retain a lot of things in my mind at once and kind of see patterns. But I think the skill I've developed through my career, through, through learning, through experience, trial and error, getting, getting older, is I, I feel very confident to say that my decision-making is informed. I actually struggle with making decisions that I think are best. I, I rather put a lot of time into reading the ground, reading the tea leaves, talking to people, allowing those patterns to develop and then formulating my casting of the vision that's really a shared vision. The great thing about that is it leads to actual buy-in, because it's of the people. We did this with the AI Task Force. It's why we were able to accomplish the AI Task Force, Fourth, Force in just three meetings, because we were able to listen well, work off of what people were saying, and galvanize a strong vision. So, it actually allows you to operate and make decisions quicker when they're informed. But that has a lot to do with getting out and listening to people. And so, I do kind of pride myself on my decisions and my leadership being a representation of the people. An example I'll give, I actually gave this yesterday in one of the committee meetings. The very first year I was a, an administrator, and I was quite young at the time, we had a student pass away in a small community the day before the last day of school. To make the story quick, his, his like second father, if you will, family best friend was the head principal. There were only two principals in the school, me and him. And I got called that evening and was shared that he had passed in ATV accident on his property. And I was informed, Adam, you need to go to the school. I can't be there, I'm with the family. You need to go to the school and you need to take charge, because the principal was grieving with the family. He was actually at the scene. And so, what I didn't understand is in small communities, the gem in the school is the hub of the community. So, everybody in the community came there to grieve that evening. And I was left alone. There was a superintendent who was in interim and he was actually in the neighboring state and he'd come over during the weeks. And I called him up and he was from a really big school system before he was in interim. And he said, yeah, I can't get over there, I'm in, you know, I'm in the other state. And he said, you're on your own. And so, on my own, with the help of one school board member, we partnered up and we staged that event, accommodated the community, created grieving opportunities. And then that superintendent said, you need to have exams on the last day of school. And I'm thinking in my mind, you're not even here. But what I knew is that they didn't need to take exams. This is a small community. And so, what I did is I actually, I, I kind of went rogue, to be honest, but it was so clearly the risk to take. And so, I met with the whole staff and got their opinion that evening, because they were all there, and they all said, we're not, we're not, nobody wants exams. And I was able to use that as leverage to, to share with the superintendent, who again was in interim, was out of state, that we need to give options to the kids. And so, we did. We let some kids take exams, some kids didn't come to school, some came and sat, some came and grieved. And we were able to do that, do right by the community by, by listening to the people and, and actually making a decision against other leadership decisions at the time. Very difficult event, probably the hardest event I'll ever deal with in, in my career.
Thank you. All right. Question number four here is describe a long-term initiative you've led. How did you maintain momentum? And is the work still making a positive impact?
Yeah, I think that can be an example even just here recently at Palmer Ridge. So, coming to Palmer Ridge, Palmer Ridge has an amazing history, so I knew that and I was able to build on that. But there was a couple of years where things were really falling apart, pretty widely known. And so, when I was hired and I will give a lot of credit to Dr. Summers and being an excellent superintendent to help get me informed and, and kind of come up with a transition plan. But when I, so to speak, got off the plane from moving here, my task was to win that staff back, but do it not just with charisma, but to do it in a way that builds culture, not because I'm dynamic, but because they have this great history. And so, in that situation, very similar, I think, to the superintendent situation, how do we turn a page? And we were able to do that instantly. A lot of it was through a very effective transition plan, which goes back again to decision-making that's informed. So, a lot of the strings that I was pulling, so to speak, were based on the data that I've worked hard to collect in person and through surveys, to know what the needs were of the people at Palmer Ridge. So, we made a goal to restore that, that culture and that trust. We also made goals to expand excellence at Palmer Ridge with a motto of excellence with equity, to push that excellence can look a lot of different ways for a lot of different kids. And we need to be broader in our definition of excellence without losing the past of what we've, we've gained. And so, it had trust, it had this pushing the, making a bridge forward with excellence with equity, equity meaning, you know, excellence in many ways. We instituted four instructional strategies that we believe are lacking in most American high school classrooms. Student voice and choice, student engagement, differentiation, and also innovative grading practices. We also instituted an advisory program, bear, bear time. And we also created a culture that we quote-unquote call a no F culture, where we're paying attention to Fs and seeking to reduce those numbers every first semester as a metric. All those initiatives, initiatives happened pretty much right out of the gate with complete buy-in, and every one of those initiatives exist to this day, four years later. And I think aren't just initiatives, but are, have become a, a common language and a heartstring in the building.
All right, thank you. We're moving on to governance and relationships. How do you define the ideal working relationship between the superintendent and the Board of Education? And what about with the school and district leaders?
Well, every relationship with the stakeholders, and there's, there's really five in the role of superintendent, are equally valuable. So, one of the burdens of leadership, which again, I'm excited about, is always maintaining all of those stakeholder relationships, maintaining them in effective ways. So, you really just don't focus on one versus the other. Clearly, there is a hierarchy concept. And if you don't take care of, say, in this situation, we're gonna say the top, but it's the idea, in other situations, the bottom, the floor, the ceiling, whatever it is. But if you don't take care of the top, which is your relationship with the five board members, then the rest is gonna be in trouble. And so, paramount to the role of superintendent is the relationship with the five board members. I see that looking a, a lot like how I engage in all my relationships, where it's authentic, there are intellectual dialogues. Not every situation has an agenda or a point of persuasion. It, it's a continual process of conversing. I think it's understanding where each board member sits, meaning what's their life story? Why are they doing the work they're doing? What are their priorities? What are their visions? I'm a big believer in a concept called alignment of visions, which is we can all share a vision if we understand where we enter that vision, because not everybody's going to lockstep have the exact same vision. That's not even how America works. So, where do we enter? What's important and how can we graft in what is important to us? And I feel very comfortable, some, one, a skill I've developed in my career is getting along with some of the most difficult people. I feel good with that, because I feel calm in those situations. And I also have adopted a view a very long time ago that no one's evil and everybody is coming from an actual set of shoes. And that really helps me get along with people where I might otherwise allow myself to get annoyed or frustrated if I didn't have that lens. So, that's working with the school board. With the, the executive team, it's, it's, it's leading a team of leaders to accomplish more together. So, this is something that, you know, it's interesting, because I work with the current executive team, but if I were to have this role, I'd be in a different situation. And I'd be in a situation that I'm most comfortable with. And the situation I'm most comfortable with is the burden of leadership. Actually, a situation that's really hard for me is not having the burden, because I don't necessarily have control. And that might sound strange to say, but having control is a great blessing, because the great leaders with that control, they open things up. They open a ceiling for all kinds of possibilities to happen. That's what a great leader does. They don't keep the, the ceiling still. They definitely don't bring the ceiling down. They open the ceiling and they empower people to accomplish more together. And I've just been in head leadership roles throughout my career, whether it was a coach or an athletic director, or now principal, et cetera. And it's just the case that I'm wired to thrive in that role where I have that burden, again, so that I can leverage it for a general good and empower others to be their best. And any team that's worked for me, leadership team that's worked for me would, would, I think, would say that. We have a very healthy leadership team at Palmer Ridge and they are widely used, widely coached, and we accomplish a lot together. School leaders, they're the most important of the whole bunch. I'll say this somewhat quickly, because I, I've gone into some different elements in this question. The most important thing in, in education, the most important thing is a student in the classroom. Research makes clear the most important, the biggest impact on the student in the classroom is effective teachers. Research also makes clear that the biggest impact on a group of effective teachers is a school principal. So, the number one job of the superintendent is to create a management team that supports and leads effectively the building principals at every level, so they can do the great work in that local school setting, which affects teachers, which affects students. So, interestingly enough, as a superintendent, I think a superintendent having a real strong principal background, because of that last point, shouldn't be missed, because it is actually the most important leadership role in the district are those, are those building principals, because of the immediate impact they have on the teachers and then on the students.
Mr. Schwartz.
So, we're still on governance and, and relationships. And the next question is what support or dynamics with the board would enable you to be most effective in the superintendent role?
That's another great question. Well, I've praised this board actually on numerous occasions, because I've actually been in districts with a whole bunch of different types of boards. And I have worked in a district, I won't name it, and it was many, many years ago, that was actually dysfunctional. And I'm glad I was in that situation, because what it, what I learned working in a leadership in that district is that the school board, even if teachers may not realize it, their functionality, their health, is actually the make or break of a school district, because you are the representation of the community. And, and so, you, I mean, that's the whole reason we have this democratic setup. And so, your health as a board and as individuals is incredibly important. And I would treat that just like I do all my other relationships, to, to be authentic, to, to be authentic and to be personal, but to also be professional. They can completely coexist. The support I would need, I think all effective boards, also true with city councils and town councils, is, is everybody knowing their appropriate lanes and knowing the, not letting a superintendent off the hook. So, I think something I would need is when I'm not fulfilling my role as superintendent. If I'm, if I'm delegating too much, where I'm neglecting things and putting my head in the sand, I would wanna be called out on that by, really anybody, but, but by the board, because that's my number one function. And likewise, you know, the board isn't to actually operate the district, they're to, to have oversight, but to actually be leading the directors who then lead in the hierarchy down. You know, those would be things we would, we need to make sure that those boundaries were clear. In terms of support, I'll take any support I can get. I'm big on authentic leadership, so you'll never hear me say I'm the boss. I, I've actually gotten on podcasts and talked about this before. It's a crazy concept, because everybody knows if you're the boss. You don't need to remind people. You just be and you act and you do it out of servanthood. So, you'll never hear me position my, use a positionality language to say, remember, I'm in charge. People are smart enough to know positions and titles. And so, with that, it allows for a lot of authenticity. And so, if, 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 if you feel that I need leadership advice and you're gonna, and we're gonna do that one-on-one, you know, it's on a phone call or you're gonna say something to me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna listen- to me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna listen and we're gonna relate, like I said in a previous question, where it's gonna be good dialogue. But that, that's why I don't get scared about difficult conversations or conflicts, just because the lens I look at it through is that this is healthy, this is good. And I would have your back in public, because again, this board and the superintendent represent two worlds that others can't relate to, nor, nor do they need to. And so it's being a team and having each other's back in terms of, that doesn't mean not disagreeing at times, but, but knowing that we're all on the same mission, which is D38 students in our community.
Thank you. Next question is, what strategies would you use to maintain transparent, respectful, and productive communication with the board while honoring governance boundaries?
Transparent communication.
Transparent, respectful, and productive communication.
Mm-hmm.
Want me to reread it? I'm happy to.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ron.
Sure. What strategies will you use to maintain transparent, respectful, and productive communication with the board while honoring governance boundaries?
Well, it kind of goes back to the last question a little bit, where we know our roles. Not just know them, like read this and now you know them, but also, you know, that's a learned experience where we, we, we grow through that and, and help each other with that, in terms of the governance boundaries. In terms of transparent, respectful, and productive communication, we need to make sure we're, you know, abiding by the laws. There's not a, an endless amount of them, but the laws that do exist related to board operations. In terms of conversations, I would love regular, regular one-on-one conversations. Being on the phone in the evenings is a common experience for me, for professional reasons, whether it's talking to staff, other leaders in my building, district office. And so I actually enjoy that, so I think it's regular communication. I think that in public, there's obviously a decor and, and the words we choose to use in public at board meetings. However, I think that there, I would hope there'd be an agreement that when we do that accordingly, we can also be very authentic in what is shared at board meetings. And so if it's a, if it's a difficult topic about legislation or next actions, and it's not gonna be detrimental to talk candidly about it, let's talk about it. That's transparency, and that goes back to everything I've already said, which is I really believe in authentic dialogue, albeit difficult, is perfectly fine. And so I would want to have that tone, and I think it's important for the community to know and expect that this board actually is authentic when they're at the table, because otherwise they're gonna believe we're hiding things, or they're gonna believe there's agendas that aren't the case. And we just need to be authentic about that. I'll, I'll give you all credit, I think this board does a great job with that. So, that excites me. And you're transparent as you visit the schools. That's another thing is, I think is really important, is, as we interact with staff and we interact with students, especially in this community and in the size of our schools. You know, the board members, you're, you're a part of it. You're serving. And so that doesn't bother me, that doesn't scare me. In fact, I want that, and, and you actually do that quite well, even compared to other boards I've seen in other districts I've worked in. And I wouldn't want that to stop.
Thank you. So a little bit different topic versus governance and relationship, more communication and community engagement. How will you ensure that staff, families, students, and community members feel heard and included in shaping the district's direction?
Well, there's three separate groups here, can be intertwined and related in different ways. I think the third group that I would add to that is students. Developmental level's obviously appropriate, but how this, how the third grader feels is really important. And it more likely may be the parent of a third grader sharing how the third grader feels, but it could be the third grader. High school for certain, you know, in the, in the secondary levels. So I think it's students. With staff and community, to be completely honest, and I think this is fair to say because I think there's, I, I hope there's a lot of people paying attention to this process. We need to build trust and stability back with the staff. If, if nothing else, an objective point is, in just two years, we've had four superintendents. Two selected superintendents and one interim twice. Four superintendents in two years. And in 25 years, we've had over 12. And so right now, it is this limbo time where I am very concerned about staff and the whole The community is, is a different topic, and, and some of the trust issues relate to that, but they relate to other things. I think with the community, there needs to be a process, and I'm prepared to do this, to listen well, even to the peripheral. You know, there's a business model, you know, 80% versus 20%, and I do believe that's true in terms of momentum and opinions. But when it comes to cohesion and vision, I actually believe in 100% model. Which is, you need to pay attention to 100%, because the 20% who may have a different opinion, they're still living in the same organism. And that, they may not get on board, and maybe they, maybe you don't want them to, but you need to understand them because they're in that same entity. And, and I really adhere to that view. And I think in our community, we have a lot of work to do to continue to understand how the community's feeling, what the issues are. And we need a dynamic, energetic, and a superintendent who also lives here, who also lives here, who can be at O'Malley's, and who can be at Lolly's, and who in five minutes can drive to a Kiwanis meeting, and who can be at the events, all the events, the many different kinds of events, to listen to people. Sometimes it'll be on the golf course, sometimes it'll be at Monument Lake. And it's just to, to understand how the community's feeling. That's a first step. With staff, I think staff want a leader who's relational, visible, and competent. Staff, I think, maybe not all, but I think staff are feeling a disconnect, and I think what they want are some simple things, which I think those words in particular are really true. Relational, visible, and competent. Now, I've spoken poorly about the district a little bit in the, in the 25-year history thing, but another point I'd like to make is that we have had three highly reputed superintendents in this history, compared to any district anywhere in the nation. And they are John Borman, who interestingly enough, the job right before becoming superintendent, he was the Lewis Palmer High School principal. It was Ted Baumann, who's still all around. And then I believe it was Casey Summers. Those leaders, two of which were prin, were principals in our score, schools, the first two. All three were energetic, relational, visible leaders. And so the ingredients to success are kind of known. It's just good leadership. But I think that's what we need again.
Thank you. We're gonna switch topics again to academic success and instructional leadership. I'll wait till you're done with your notes, take your time. What are the most significant challenges currently facing student learning and academic success in Lewis Palmer School District? And how should we respond?
I think the, I think we're, we're not far off, to be honest, Mr. Schwartz. I think we're on the right trajectory as a district. Change is inevitable for thousands of years, but we are certainly, anything you read in the business world and, and, and any kind of academia, it, things are changing really quick, really soon. And COVID is a part of that. COVID changed things. And so we look at hybrid work, we look at remote work, we look how it's hard to get jobs now. You think it's easier actually, because, you know, you can apply and you can work anywhere, but the problem is they're, you know, they're competing from a larger scale, the, the applicants. And so now you can hire, a company can hire somebody from New York as easily as potentially Indonesia, depending on what the, the skill is. So COVID changed so much. We, I presented at the work session on AI, and how industries are already, they're already leveraging AI. I think the traditional school day and, and how long you should be in school, and, and what is good learning from the old tested and true compared to performance-based learning. I think the concept of pathways. I think the concept of creating a future worker who's not only skilled, but has the resilient factor, where when their job changes or the market changes in a short period of time, they're able to adapt into a new, a new job. Those kinds of things are where I think we need to be pushed in our current learning. I think we are on pace for that in the district. I'm pleased with where we're, we're aiming. But I think it also isn't just an innovation center, right? It's more widespread to all the classrooms, even pushing down into the elementaries where and when appropriate. Now, with that to be said, good old reading and writing are tried and true. And literacy is without a doubt, an essential skill and something that does make the brain I guess I would also say, Mr. Schwartz, retention of quality teachers. Because like I said before, the greatest impact on a classroom is effective teachers. I'm proud at Palmer Ridge, we've done a, a lot of great work of not only retaining teachers, but hiring teachers in a very difficult market. We just hired two teachers for next year. They come in from other school districts, they just finished their second year at a really, really great school, each of them separately. They're college educated, and they went to college, kind of like people my age used to do, where they were trained formally, and now they're entering the profession. I don't know about district-wide, but at Palmer Ridge, we're starting to now hire those people. And they're potentially career, career-life-long educators. And so we're excited about that, and I think we need to continue, it's not to say that's the only kind of teacher we're looking for, but we need to continue to attract the very best teachers. And a lot of the academics will, so to speak, take care of themselves.
Ready for the next one? Okay. New topic. Leadership style and growth. How would you describe your leadership style? What are your core strengths, and what areas are you continuing to develop?
I think in a tangible sense, I think what I do a good job at, and these aren't necessarily my core values, these are just, I think these are the manifestation of the skills, is I think I'm, I think I'm good at helping people understand. So that's, that deals with vision, that deals with cohesion, that deals with difficult conversations, that deals with conflict resolution. But I think I'm, I'm good at helping people understand. Maybe that's the original teacher and coach in me. I think I'm effective at empowering people, because I truly believe that we accomplish more together. The competitive side of me knows I must empower teams for us to, to accomplish great things. And I actually get a lot of satisfaction in the development of others. That's, that's a passion of mine, especially in leadership. I think another thing I do well is produce results. So it's not just all talk, it's, it's actually moving the needle. It's actually creating a shared vision where there's buy-in, and then the satisfaction. That's one of the things I love the most about coaching, is winning. And when you won, and in sports, it's so simple, because you either win or you lose. But when you win as a team, that feeling is so satisfying. So satisfying when it's a team. And I still hold that view just about leadership. That's how I feel about Palmer Ridge. In terms of, you know, core, core values, I think that it's all about people. So, you know, one statement I think describes me, it's kind of my, my motto, is I am a people-oriented problem solver. I'm a people-oriented problem solver who seeks to inspire and empower others. And for what? To, just to feel good, no, to, to actually pursue and achieve innovation and excellence. Because those are, those are exciting things to achieve as a group. And so I think that summarizes, you know, me. What things do I need to grow in? I mean, leadership never stops. It never stops, and, and, and again, I like the challenge, I like the burden of it. It keeps me going. But one thing about leadership is every, every year's different, every circumstance is different, it's full of dynamics. And so it's always changing. And so it's, it's life learning like no other. So I think continuing to grow is continuing to learn from others, to find mentors. I've always been a watch, steal, and, and activate kind of person. I'll be honest, there's a lot of things about Dr. Summers, I just watched and learned and took and ate and, and became hopefully formed differently. And I've had lots of leaders in my career who I've done that with. And so that's why I read a lot of books, too, is just to learn, learn, learn. I think some things I struggle with, Mr. Schwartz, is, I'm always reminding myself to be me. That was something that John Wooden, the famous coach, always talked about, be you. And in leadership, you know, it's lonely. And so there's, there's always this tension of where do I need to reflect and change, and how do I do that? And always finding that tension where you're still always true to yourself. I find that to be a challenge, but something I'm always, is kind of a steering light, you know? You've gotten this far, your motives are pure, be true to yourself. I think another struggle I have is I really get, I really struggle with poor uninformed decisions, which kind of ties back to, you know, how I go about decision-making. So it's, it's difficult to see decisions that are missing information. I, I really struggle with that. It's one reason I like the burden of leadership, is because you can work, you can, I used the word control before, it's a poor word, but it's to say you have the opportunity to, it's, the opportunity is endless, so you can reach out to anybody and everybody to gather information to then lead informed decisions. That again, have higher buy-in, they're more intelligent, and you win bigger, and you have more of that enjoyment from that win.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we are at question number 11. It is 2:15, so just so we're keeping track of time. Okay, so, reflecting on your recent leadership experiences in D38 or elsewhere, what lessons have shaped your current approach?
One of the best lessons I ever learned, so I became a varsity head coach at 24 years old. And it was a school where if you were under And it was a school where if you were under 500, they like really would fire you. It was a lot of pressure. And, um, I was 24 years old, varsity head coach, and early in coaching, what I learned is we're going to be better when I have good assistant coaches. And that was an early leadership experience, and so it's really stuck with me. And so what I, it goes back to what I've already said. So it's this idea that as the leader, yeah, you have the burden and the responsibility and really the privilege, but it's developing a team of leaders to then accomplish more. So that was one of the most valuable leadership experiences I ever had. Um, I don't know where I learned it. Maybe by just listening to employees. But employees want autonomy. They do not want to be micromanaged. And they do, and they want to be included, or they want to at least know they could be included and can be included if they wanted to. I think it's a fundamental human need in the workplace. And so I'm really big on autonomy. But it's also the concept, when you're about vision, it's also, it's kind, it's the concept of freedom within fences. You know, tight and loose. What are we, what are we going to have loose agreements on? What are we going to have tight agreements on? And those can change, it's dynamic, it can change at, at different moments. But that's a value I've, I've learned along the way. The other thing I've learned along the way, and maybe it's from becoming a parent, is every, I've said this for well over 10 years. Every child is their parent's most prized possession. Every child is every parent's most prized possession. And I think when you have that view, it makes it a lot easier to have the 40-minute conversations that I regularly have on the phone with Palmer Ridge parents. Because they're doing what they should do, which is to advocate for their child, to understand more about what's going on, and you're able to share from different vantage points. So they learn from the principal, or superintendent, or whomever, and then you learn from the parent. And so I think just respect, respect for stakeholders is something that I've, I've really come to learn in my career.
How do you assess your own effectiveness and that of your leadership team? And what indicators will help you know you're succeeding as superintendent?
By what others say, whom I lead. If I don't lead them, I'm not saying I don't want a good relationship. But my, I'm, my leadership's entrusted to those whom I lead. Obviously, a superintendent, that's a very large group, a very wide stakeholder group. But as principal of Palmer Ridge High School currently, do I find myself fighting for the school? Quite often. Because that's my charge. My charge is Palmer Ridge. As a district leader, it's the district, it's our community. Can you repeat the question again, Ms. Upchurch?
How do you assess your own effectiveness and that of your leadership team? It's a two-part question. And what indicators will help you know you're succeeding as superintendent?
Yeah, and so, so indicators is the second part. Back to the first part, again, it sounds cliche to say, but it's, it's the respect and the trust and the rapport that others have with me. And you can measure that, you certainly can measure that through surveys, through retention rates, that goes into indicators. But some things, some of the best things aren't always measurable. Like if you ask my wife, rate your husband on a scale of one to 10. What she might say is, I don't know, but I love him. So not all things are measurable. And a lot of times in organizational leadership, the results are the employees who stay. Because they enjoy working for the leader. Because we know research shows that that's one of the biggest reasons people leave jobs. So I think that's a huge indicator right there. I think also weathering time. So relationships are up and down, conflict is actually healthy. And as you communicate through conflict and controversies, you have an opportunity to build stronger bonds. And over time, those relationships live on. And I can, I won't right now, but I can name parents in the community, staff in my building, even students, who I've gotten on maybe the wrong end of. But you, as the leader, you stay, you stay true to that relationship. You continue in it, you have new opportunities, and not only do you come kind of full circle, but you actually grow stronger together and the relationship rekindles and even is more lasting.
Thank you. Briefly explain how Colorado's state funding model impacts Lewis Palmer School District? And how would you navigate those financial realities?
Well, I'm from Ohio. It's my fourth year in Colorado, and like I said, I don't plan on leaving the state. School funding is definitely a concern nationwide. And it ebbs and flows with different politics, both at the state and at the federal level. And that's not going to change. We have terms and, and elections. So there's always that dynamic in the first place. But in Colorado, the, the burden is very heavily on the local district. The state doesn't do a horrible job with funding. I mean, it could be worse. The federal, the federal funding is, is pretty disappointing when you look at the whole pie Local funding is the difference maker. And, and I am very impressed, I'll, I'll say it publicly in this interview, I'm very impressed with Mr. Ridgeway and what he's been able to do on many, many levels. Um, I'm impressed with, um, the leveraging of the valuations that came through recently. I'm impressed with the efficiencies that we have done to be leaner with our money. Palmer Ridge has played a huge role in that. We've produced, uh, a lot of money from, um, not hiring back staff if we don't need to, um, in the last three years. Uh, difficult, but it's, it make, it's essential in that situation. I think there's a lot we can do to be business savvy about our decisions. Why wouldn't any company do that? Any organization? I mean, there are parallels between companies, actual companies and, and schools and nonprofits. But at the end of the day, I, I'm convinced that, that we can partner with our community when it comes to local funding. I'm convinced of that. When, how, I mean, that's more work to be done. But what I know about this community is, first of all, I don't fault anybody for having opinions about taxes and finances. It's actually, it's quite, they should. So I don't, I don't have any fault with that. But we're, we're unique even in the state of Colorado in that we are such a bedroom community. It reminds me of a lot of communities elsewhere in the nation, like even where I'm from. And the great thing about our community is when you live here, you, you pretty much send your kids to our schools. When you live here, you're in, we're in a small area. I mean, it is, it is a community, even though it's Palmer Lake and Monument, yes, Woodmore with its own element, we are one community and we're ba, and we're, the common ground are the schools. I love that about D38. Not all of Colorado's like that. And so I think partnering with our community and making progress with the local, um, revenue share is, it is still really important.
If you had to summarize your core leadership strengths in one sentence, what would it be?
Well, this one will be quick because I already said it. I, I believe that I am a people-oriented problem solver. Who seeks to inspire and empower others to achieve innovation and excellence.
You did say that. See, that was a quick one.
Yeah.
Okay. Under community submitted, some of the community, other, some of the other community submitted questions. Lewis Palmer needs a superintendent who can unify, inspire, and strategically guide the district forward. How would you approach this responsibility in your first year?
Well, I, I kind of answered this one too, but there's more to say about it. These words are actually, they're, they're meaningful words, they're not just words to pick from. By being relational, visible, and competent. Those are qualities that I think comprise a great leader. Those are qualities that I feel are very much desired right now. And so being visible, I'll, here's something I said in the committee meetings, you know, Dr. Summers is interesting. There were many times where Dr. Summers was not actually that visible. And I think the reason for that is he was doing so much. He was tackling so much for the district. He did a lot. Something I loved about him is that when he interacted with people, he made them feel a certain way. So even if you didn't see him every day in your school, when you did have interactions with him, the way he made you feel were lasting. And so that's the relationship piece. And so it's, it's the staff and the community and the kids knowing their superintendent. Like I hope you will see photo selfies of, if I'm superintendent, of me with kids. Especially in today's, modern day. I mean, it, it's, it's being known and being a face and an actual entity to the community. Can you repeat the question, make sure I'm not missing a part, Ms. Upchurch?
Sure. Lewis Palmer needs a superintendent who can unify, inspire, and strategically guide the district forward. How would you approach this responsibility in your first year?
Yeah, so in the first year, it's immediate. I think there needs to be, it's, it's somewhat common transition plan. I think it needs to be immediate listening tours. I think there needs to be some creative ways to do that in the, with the community. Um, I have some vision for actually some, some new and innovative ways to communicate with the community. Where it's, it's not just newsletters or board meetings, it's, it's more kind of regular output. So they're learning what the superintendent's thinking and what they, and what they're sharing on behalf of the district. I mean, that's very modern, we even see presidents doing that in modern times. And so I think we need more of that. I'm not saying town halls all the time, but I think we need opportunities to go beyond PCCAC and board meetings, because we're only hitting a segment of people. Like I said, some of it's just grassroots, you know, it's, it's being at Lollies and O'Malley's and being around the community. I've seen you at a lot of parades and events downtown, Mr. Schwartz, and, um, it's just I talked about the work with the board, I talked about the work with the executive team, but, um, I think it's also, uh, getting in the buildings and listening to staff. I think we need a bit of a restart. A restart and a turning of the page. And then I think you, you do all that data collection, you do all that visibility into the beginning, the beginnings of year one and onward. But I think you also, um, I think the superintendent carries a sense of posi, positivity and confidence in the future. Because I think that gets seen and it allows people to, to jump, you, leadership matters. And the tone you set and, and the way that you're positive and you believe, and, and I hope to embody that early on as I interact with people and in public forums, so that we're able to turn a page and, and get to the good work that we're doing and, and have stability and longevity in the superintendent role.
Dr. Schenk, thanks.
Okay, we're still on, well, we're finishing up with community submitted questions. It's about 2:33 and we've got, what, like 12 minutes?
Well, yeah, we'll finish, but, yeah.
Okay, all right. All righty. What distinguishes you as the right leader for D38 at this time, particularly when it comes to making decisions under pressure?
So an interesting concept I thought about, it actually really popped in my mind yesterday morning, but I was thinking about this, because it can be, I'm sure there's discussion about prerequisite credentials. That's actually common for any leadership position. I will say I have a PhD in organizational leadership and I'm licensed to be superintendent in two states. And I have 20 years of education experience and the majority of it in school administration. But I was thinking about this and, um, you know, when you look at the President of the United States, how many cabinet members have become president? Like Secretary of State, Secretary of the Treasury? Not many. How many governors have become president? A lot. And I think though there can be debate over experience, here's a reality, is that when you are in charge of a high school, it is an operation that is governance. It deals with canceling events, think snow days. It deals with unrelated circumstances happening at once. It deals with attending events. It deals with constant engagement with parents and the community. It deals with handling crises. It deals with the, being the face of an organization. It deals with leading teams of leaders. It deals with staffing, it deals with curriculum, it deals with instruction. Actually, all the executive departments exist to support schools and all of the functionality that takes place from the executive departments are the things happening in a high school. And so I think I'm situated very well. And not needing other rungs of the ladder in between to do that work, to execute that skillset now on a bigger level, because it's a privilege to be able to, to use my leadership at a level that's larger for the benefit of D38. And I think being a high school principal actually situates me like, like a governor who would maybe seek to be president. I also know, like I shared before, one of the best leaders we've ever had came directly from the high school role, um, and John Borman. I think the other thing is too, it's, it's about fit. Now more than ever, I mean, we're in kind of a tough spot, it's not the end of the world, but I mean, four superintendents in two years. I think now more than ever, it's looking at the right fit. And leadership aptitude for the future. I think it should be someone who lives in the district. If you have the opportunity for it, I think it should. You don't always have the opportunity for it. And I also think that right now in our executive office, there's a lack of secondary experience. And I, I did the math the other day, and a majority of the students and staff that comprise the district, majority of students and staff are in one of the three secondary buildings. And right now, I think there's a gap there.
As an internal candidate, how will you bring fresh innovative thinking to the superintendent role while preparing students for the future, even when you're met with resistance?
Well, someone said to me actually recently, I won't share the name, but I, I, they said this of me, to me, and I didn't, I didn't really think about it until they said it. But I think in that question, I kind of represent the best of both worlds, because I'm internal in that I'm already leading in, in our district. But I am an outsider in that I've only been here four years. And I've worked in four different districts. And I have experience from another state. And I've worked at schools that are more And I've worked at schools that are more wealthy, and schools that are more at risk, and I've worked at rural schools, and I have some urban experience. And so I think I bring a wealth of experience that's beyond D-38. But in terms of being an insider, this is where I work, and this is my Colorado home. I mean, this is where we live and where I hope my future is. So I think in terms of innovative ideas, hopefully that answers that question. In terms of, let's see my notes here, resistance. There's always resistance, but I think it goes back to a lot of things I've spoken about, about how you relate, how you present as a leader. Because we are somewhat short on time, I will also say, I've succeeded at Palmer Ridge with parents. And I have a lot of conversations with parents on a regular basis, not to mention staff, where it's what I've already described, you know, long conversations where you're relating and you're talking it out. And I think that I do have a proven track record in being able to work with this community in effective ways. And I feel that if I can do that at Palmer Ridge successfully for four years, even from coming from another state, because that was kind of, you know, that's a challenge, coming from, you know, you're really an outsider. And being able to come from another state and do that right out of the gate and maintain that still to this day, I don't see why I wouldn't be positioned to do that with the whole district.
In your first 90 days, how will you stabilize district leadership and strengthen staff engagement morale? How will you ensure that the decisions remain student-centered amid political or community pressure?
Well, listening tours will make a big difference across all stakeholders. Immediate work to do with the board, I already talked about that. Call it team building, if you will. Also with the executive team and district office. I think it's not just directives. I don't even really like that word. I think it's getting on the same page. It's all the kind of stuff I've already talked about, how I operate as a leader. It's getting to a point of shared vision and cohesion, because we need everybody to be on board and together, because we're a team. You know, it's not boss language, like, "I'm in charge, so you must." There's a time and place for accountability where somebody needs to move in a different direction, for sure. But most times, it's about finding the win-win and creating a team environment. And so that would be the task with the executive team. And that's what I call an agreeable. That's a term I use in leadership. Things that are agreeable. And so if it's not agreeable to be on the same team, so we're more effective for the good of our students and this district, then I don't know what to tell you. Because that is agreeable, especially if we're relating in effective ways. You talked about the political landscape. That goes back to, I think, being effective and helping people understand things. So I've been in many conversations through just Palmer Ridge where it's explaining laws to parents, it's explaining the why. It doesn't mean we have to agree, but it's the is what it is, and then it's how do we navigate through that? You know, how can I respect your opinion? How can you respect mine? But how can we be together on this? Because what's the central goal? All compromise deals with getting to the central goal. And the central goal in this industry is really great, it's kids.
What do you see as the most pressing challenges students face in achieving academic success? And how should we address them together at the district level?
This kind of gets to the question of what's to come in our ever-changing world. What we're hearing from students, well, here's what I'll say. I'm not saying every home life is perfect, but one major strength of this community is parent involvement. I've been in communities where that is not the case. And so we need to praise that and tout it, and I actually do that all the time in my leadership at Palmer Ridge. Why do we have great kids? We've got great parents. It's not worth making up another reason. That's where it starts. And then our staff and our leadership do great things with those kids, but the parents, the community. So we've got a good thing going in that a lot of our kids are ahead of the game because they're in great homes. I think one thing that is a challenge is what if you're not in one of those homes? Or what if you feel different than the community? Because we are quite homogeneous. And so I think it's taking care of kids. I've even heard the board say that many times, it's taking care of kids. And we need to never lose sight of that, because every kid's a kid, and every kid's a child, a parent's most prized possession. I think another thing we're hearing from the older kids is mental health. A sense of identity. These are kind of age-old things, by the way, but I think it's, they're being attacked in different angles, and so I think it's the adults and the leaders understanding the angles they're being attacked from. I think they're being attacked in the same ways we were, but in different ways. Think social media, et cetera. And then I think the other thing the kids need from us is for us to understand future industry and future readiness, because it's always changing. My dad owned a mom-and-pop store, was very successful, and Big Box shut it down, right? I mean, the world's always changing, and industry's always changing, and it is right now really rapidly. And so it's making sure that we have our pulse on future readiness. Because the kids, if we tell them something, they'll believe it. And so we need to make sure we're teaching and programming the right stuff. And so that's partnering with industry as much as we can. Ms. Upchurch, how many more do I have?
Um, we have one, oh, we have two more questions, and we have one minute left, but we'll just finish through.
What benchmarks or key indicators will you use to measure your success as a superintendent? Say at one, two, three, five years?
We had a similar question. I'll try to go kind of quick on this. Five is really simple, that I still have a job. I don't like to get into the one, two, three kind of thing. It gets into what I said about strategic planning. I think you set targets, but you know they're always moving. But I think at the end of the day, it's when people want to be here, they want to work here, when community is proud. I think if a levy ever gets passed, where you put your money shows where your heart is, and so, and where your mind is too, let me say that. It's not just heart. It's being smart about decisions. And so if we're able to ever pass a levy or get different partnerships, maybe it's not even in a levy, but it's different partnerships with the community, it's showing that we're a team. And so I think a lot of the indicators will be shown through those relationships. It all comes down to relationships. Even successful businesses understand relationships.
Did you do me a favor and do the last one so I can make, I'm writing a note down that I'm already forgetting?
What approach would you take to collaboratively develop effective policies around student cellphone use with input from staff, students, and families?
Well, it goes back to informed decision-making. That's an interesting one to end on. Is that the last question?
Well, I'm going to ask you if you have any questions for us.
Oh, okay. It goes back to informed decision-making. So one thing you don't want to do is, you don't want to, you know, you don't want to jump the gun, so to speak. You don't want to, I'm really big on, I haven't talked about this yet, but unintended consequences. I'm always trying to keep an eye out for unintended consequences. I'm a pretty broad thinker, and so it comes naturally to me, but it's working with teams to look at the plus deltas. You know, it's looking at, what are we missing here? A lot of times, you know, multiple things are true at once, and so it depends on the angle you're looking at it from. Cellphones are one of those interesting things, because I guess the mechanism would be a lot of deliberation. Task force are really good, but task force also limited in that they're a small group that's identified. Maybe it's a widespread, but there's more voices that are needed. Especially if it's going to be something like a pretty big decision. Cellphones are really difficult, because I didn't have my cellphone for the last three hours, because I was sequestered and couldn't watch the sessions. And it was really challenging. And one might say, well, you see, you're better off without a cellphone. But I also know I use time management with a cellphone. I actually use it productively in a professional sense. So my performance actually improves by leveraging technology. So it's pros and cons. But then it's same with the students. We just talked about AI, we talked about future industries. So if they don't have a cellphone, but then they're going to have a cellphone when they're older, how are they going to learn to use those? And then when is the right time to introduce a cellphone? I believe in scaffolding, and so all ages acquire different tools at different ages. I think it needs a lot of discussion, but I think what would be owed to me, owed to others by me as a leader, is that they have all the information. Not from me, but we gather all the information, so we're making informed decisions. Most decisions find a place in the middle, I believe. I believe most decisions come to some level of compromise on a spectrum, where I think cellphones is one of those topics.
And then in closing, do you have any questions for us as a board?
I do not. But I was going to open with this, and I'd just like to say publicly, first of all, I'm very grateful for this opportunity. I'm grateful, I'm excited to Mr. Brown's original question. The other thing I would like to say, I don't know how much praise you guys always get, but I also commend you as a healthy board, and I also commend you for taking this process very seriously, because it's been difficult, right? And I think everybody who's connected knows, and I didn't make up that fact about four supers in two years. I mean, we've, there's, it's a lot going on, and you deserve a lot of credit for Ron, you know, not the easy button that you talked about, but getting on top of things and focusing on tomorrow for the district. So just want to thank you, I don't have any questions.
I was going to say, do you have any closing remarks you'd like to make, but?
I don't think I do.
I think you just did. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comprehensive answers.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Brown's still here?
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
See, if you think about it, you really had five board members, because it came twice.
That was funny.